I know that we offer help wherever possible. I know our staff offers help. I think you just need to reach out. The other thing is that you went in and put in the advanced placement courses thinking that you had to do it. You need to research before you move into something. So you should have really looked into that before you moved into that and then to have to come back out of it because you didn't take the time to look into it. And I know you've stretched.
Good morning. I'd like to call this workshop after September 19th to order, please. And first on our agenda will be instructional materials. Natalie Rocker.
Good morning. Natalie is going to, of course, be speaking along with Rob Menugian. But I wanted to first apologize for the late addition of this PowerPoint. We could have canceled this part of the workshop because we had meetings scheduled last week that needed to, of course, be rescheduled to yesterday and this morning. So what we would like to do is go through very carefully with you the work that they've done in trying to analyze the textbook adoption process. And we're hoping that you, at the end of this, can give us some guidance. You know, as you know, instructional materials covers all of the resources that are used in classrooms. This presentation is not about all of those ancillary materials. It's not about software programs. It's not about the almost infinite number of materials that teachers use every day in their classroom. This is simply about the textbook adoption process. And at the end of this, we'd really like your guidance. And Natalie's gonna give you the exact questions. One question, actually, that we would like to have kind of your guidance on so we know how to proceed for the next school board workshop and for the development of policy on this issue, which, as you know, would have to be advertised for 30 days and you would have a lot of input at that time also. So Natalie, I'll let you begin and give them the question that we would really like their guidance on.
And I appreciate you apologizing on our behalf, but anyway. But as Laura said, the purpose here today was just to give you a brief presentation just with the key steps that we currently use and again to get your guidance. And the key question that we have is we can go one of two ways for textbook adoption. One of them is that, as we've currently been doing for the last, I don't know how many years, and the same is what our other counties do, is that we pretty much continue the state's process. So we pick up where the state leaves off. So the state has a very rigorous process. They do an RFP. They solicit input from vendors. They have committees that they compose with representation across the state, all different sorts of folks. They narrow down. They go through the RFP process to narrow it to a set of materials that they put as a list of materials that are approved for adoption. So we pick up from that point and have our own committee and our own protocol and go through a similar process, but only looking at those that have already been vetted by the state. So the state might say out of this, they start off with seven. They vet it. They evaluate. They come down with four. They're on the list. We look at the four and we begin our process. The other option is that we can do, we can opt out of that process and do our own from scratch, which of course has a lot of implications, but it is an option. So before we can proceed to come back to you with policy and details on how we do this, we needed to have some guidance on that first key, that first key step. So that was today's purpose. And if you're not ready to make any kind of recommendation for us or guidance, then as Laura said, we'll come back again on October 17th with more information so that you can in turn give us guidance in this. So as you turn to your PowerPoint, do you want me to go up there and navigate?
Sure.
Most of this is gonna be Rob since he's been doing this for a long time.
Do it.
Oh, great. My boss gets to navigate.
Oh, boss.
You produce, Rob.
Oh, I'm sorry. But for the audience, it's Rob Menugian. He's our program manager or project manager, I call him supervisor, of instructional materials, which also includes library services and media and everything, all the tools that our teachers need to provide a great instructional environment for our students. So anyway, so if you look at the PowerPoint, that first slide is what I talked about, the option A or option B. And again, you can think about this and ponder this as we go through the presentation. And I'm gonna turn it over to Rob.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having us today. So as Natalie mentioned, option A is pretty much where we stand right now, which means the state calls in all the vendors. I'll use this year as an example, 612 Science. So the state has called in all the vendors, any and all vendors, that want to submit materials for consideration for adoption by the state of Florida. They submit, the state puts together a committee to vet that initial list, and then they narrow down to what they refer to as their short bid list. From their short bid list, they narrow further to the state adopted list. And what we have done in the past, as far, as long as I've been around and as far as I know, what we've always done is that we've used that process, that vetting process, and then called our list, pulled in vendors from the short bid list or the adopted list. Sometimes the state's actual final list of adopted materials doesn't come until very late in the process. So we usually use the short bid list and bring in vendors and review those materials initially. And at that point, then we undertake our regular process by convening a committee, which we'll go into a little more in-depth after that. Option B, as Natalie referred to, would be Sarasota County schools opting out of that initial process, which would mean that we would be responsible for contacting or publishing an open call for materials from all the vendors, having to put together a committee of people that, quite honestly, it would take an extraordinary amount of time to then vet every and all proposals that would come to Sarasota County to basically narrow and come up with our own short bid list. And then we would begin the procedure that we have in place now. That's really the short, that's the skinny of it. I included a link and in the back of your presentation, I've actually included the statute that breaks down the process, for the most part, that entire process, that we would have to undertake should we elect to opt out. I think it's important to note that of 67 counties in Florida, this has been on the books as an option for about five years. Up until this year, there has never been a county that elected to do so. This year, Marion County did elect to do so, but they are not too far along in this process. They just made the decision about three months ago. In my limited contact with their instructional material supervisor, it's off to a shaky start because of the overwhelming amount of work required to vet all those materials. So the next page, you'll see just a very brief explanation and timeline of our process. This is very fluid, based on hurricanes and things like that, where we end up within that ebb and flow as far as currently we have the timeline, which you're tentatively looking at. This is rather generic. Our timeline specifically refers to science materials. So we develop the timeline and then move through the months. Currently, we're in September. Currently, we have all the samples in our warehouse from the short bid list. Naturally, as part of this process, there are materials that are submitted that may make it to the state's short bid list prior to, that we look at, that may not make the final list. We have no way of knowing sometimes. There are products that come to us maybe entirely digital, which may not work for us, and we have to preclude them from moving further in the process because we really can't institute a completely 100% digital adoption from top to bottom. So sometimes, you know, all of those things have to be taken into consideration whether they move forward in the process. Once we pull those materials in, we then, sure. Oh, and I've broken down. Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself. So I broke down.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Richard?
Just for purpose of the clarification, I know you said the state has a short bid list and then there's also a state adopted list.
Yes.
And so just again, for clarification purposes, we, our district can sometimes go from the short bid list and start evaluating them. We don't wait until the state adopted list is really.
Correct. Because in prior adoption, sometimes the final adopted list hasn't come until the second year or third year, second year of the adoption. We have the ability to adopt within three years of the state adopting.
Okay.
We, several years ago, the last two adoptions, we moved to the second year, which we found very beneficial because it allows other districts to adopt a product that may be new and then I can get feedback, we get feedback from those districts to say, this implementation isn't working, and then we can use that information to move forward. In this case, with Science, we're adopting along with everybody else in the first year because of, you know, budget limitations and where we are in the cycle. So we, us, we along with everyone else is kind of in the same, we're all in the same boat. So you're welcome. So if you turn to August, the next page, basically, this is a breakdown of each month, and we have the timelines in place already. I've requested samples of materials. Those samples sometimes come from our program specialists who attend conferences that come to me and say, oh, I was there and we saw X, such and such a product. I'll check to make sure they're on the short bid list, have submitted to the state. There's no point in us pulling in materials that haven't even been submitted to the state because if they're not on the state adopted list, we can't adopt them anyway. And that has changed in statute, too. It's very rigid to say if the state hasn't adopted it and you're following the state process, then you can't adopt. So there's usually, based on subject area, there are wide and varied allotment of materials submitted. It's usually not one or two, especially with Science, you know. So the short bid list currently, for any one subject, may have four to seven or eight different samples from publishers. So we pull those in, eye contact the publishers, and we pull those into the warehouse. And what we call that is our initial review. So once they come to the warehouse and we can, you can move in, you can flip the page and move into September.
You said we have four to eight different publishers. Do they, it's only each?
Submit one book, so we're looking at four to eight textbooks in each adoption process?
That's a great question. So for Science, because I, we refer to it blanketly as Science, however, within Science, we have six, eight, so Earth, Life and Physical, and we don't do comprehensive. So we do domain-specific, so Earth and sixth grade, Life and Physical, seventh and eighth grade. So the vendor will, I don't want to refer to any specific one because I'm really not, but you know, a vendor will submit and say, well, we're only doing comprehensive. Well, we don't do comprehensive, so they're out of that process. So it's content, making sure the vendor has products that we use and are gonna meet our needs. So those products, we'll pull them in and say, Pearson, I have to use a specific one. They're submitting for Biology, but not Physical at the high school level. So now it's Pearson, here's your sample. So when we're reviewing Biology samples, there may be three or four vendors, and if they're not submitting for Anatomy and Physiology, there may only be two. So you know, largely, if we're doing K-5 reading or some of those others, but once we get into high school and the courses are specific, Science is the broad, and then we start breaking it out into courses, different publishers will say, we're not submitting. We're submitting for Biology, but we're not submitting for Physical or Earth. So this is a rather unique adoption. So it's, you know, the first Science adoption that I've been a part of, so to see how unique it is. And the samples are at the warehouse. You're more than welcome to come out and take a look if you want to see what we've pulled in and what's.
Yeah, I guess my question was, are you talking about six to eight textbooks? But you're talking about many, many more textbooks than six to eight.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So if you turn to September, so our program specialists, our content area curriculum specialists are tasked with developing a rubric. We have foundations in place to evaluate those materials. There are, there is a group across the state. Districts are starting to join together to make this a common cause, to assess materials because we share a lot of information and we want to make sure that we're all doing our due diligence and reviewing instructional materials and making sure that they meet standards, you know, not only Sarasota standards, state standards, bless you. So our curriculum team sits and develops the rubric by which we will evaluate or review our materials for adoption. Excuse me. Following that, we will form the committee. This is very broad, so, and we've discussed actually within the policy how it breaks down, how the committee is actually composed, but it's not that time to go into all of that. But the committee is formed and it's made up of community members and our program specialists along with, and teachers, primarily teachers, at least two-thirds. It's much higher than that. What we've done in the past, and again, I refer to in the past, our committees are exclusively teachers. Our voting members for textbooks have been exclusively teachers. We surround them with support. That support is non-biased, non-committal to any specific, so we bring in people from IT. We bring in ESOL representation. We bring in ESE representation to weigh in and say, product A has a ton of support, an exceptional amount of support in ESE. ESOL may weigh in and say, well, the support for ESOL isn't that, you know, they're not giving their opinion on a specific product, they're just saying what it is. So from an IT perspective, can we use it in our single sign-on environment? Is it accessible for kids on their devices? Those kind of things without saying, this product is better, this product isn't. And we always tell our committees, we're not throwing anything out for one reason. So if they said, well, we have digital, but it's not mobile, but it's the best product that we've seen and the teachers love it, we're not gonna say, well, you can't get it on your cellphone, so we're not going to adopt it. So I mean, that's the committee. And those meetings are posted and open to the public to attend. We do invite committee members to actually participate in the process, and they'll get samples, and they come to the presentations and do those things. Normally, in the past, they have been recruited by curriculum or support staff or district level administrators who say, oh, I know a teacher, he's retired, or he just moved down, he wants to be a part of this, and we invite them in to participate in that process.
Can you talk a little bit about staff's involvement in the state's process?
In the past, as a former state representative for reading adoption a long time ago, I can tell you that we always make suggestions and recommendations and open that up to staffs. It is a completely voluntary process, but we submit names all the time, and the state vets those names based on, if Sarasota sent 50 names, they may say, well, you know, we've got enough representation from the west coast of Florida where we're looking for northeast and may not pull that in.
Yep. The state, the state sends out a request for nominations, which as Rob says, we fill out. And the state, of course, I assume, gets everything in and they pick folks. So it's not, we can volunteer and nominate folks, and sometimes we're part of that process and sometimes not. I've been on some of those committees for tests and assessments. I used to get picked all the time because I know it was large county, female Hispanic testing expert, and I always fit that slot. And I used to tell my colleagues in Tallahassee, I knew, I know why I'm here. So they do that, and we have had staff over the years be selected to be part of that process.
Eric.
This kind of goes to your original question, but it's, I think it's apropos at this point. How satisfied are you with the state process? And is it, does it depend on the subject that the state process do? Do they do Science adoption better than they do math adoption? Are you happy with the state's adoption process through all the subjects?
From my experience, both as a committee member at one point, quite a number of years ago, through my experience in this role, where I've been through two adoptions, two major adoptions, I'm very satisfied. They, you know, the state seems to, and I know it's a struggle for the state to convene those committees and vet those numbers of materials that they receive. Very rarely, from, again, from my perspective, have I seen a short bid list or a final adopted list where I question and say, where did this come from or why did they do this? Now, I'm not the content expert. I rely on content. I'm a language arts guy. I'm a former middle school language arts teacher. So you know, if we get into math and biology, I'm not the best person, but our content experts are the ones, and they have been, they're very excited this year, both our middle school and high school content specialists are very excited about the samples that they've seen so far.
So it's across the all-subject area, is it?
Correct. From my experience.
Okay, thank you.
So moving into October and November, what we do, once we've narrowed, basically, essentially, for lack of a better term, our list, eye contact the publishers and we have them come down and present. It really is, to coin a phrase, a dog and pony show. You know, it's an hour, it's a sales pitch, it's, here's the best parts, here's the best pieces of what we have to show you. And at that point, at the end of that meeting, there have been times where the teachers, the committee will come back together, we reconvene after they do their presentations. They leave the room, they're gone, they pack up, and our committee has said, we love everything we saw, or there's one that clearly stands out to them that they say, we don't, no one is interested in having that product move forward. And I notify the publishers after that and say, you've been selected to move forward, or unfortunately, you haven't. And our content experts then provide me with an explanation. We always, we like to provide the publishers with an explanation as to why they weren't selected to move forward. You know, it's happened in the past. There have been times that we've, we've come back believing that it would be just one product that we were going to elect to move forward or sample, maybe two at the schools, and the teachers came in very excited about something that we said, okay, sure. And we sample those out to schools as well, which is the next part. So once they come back to us at the end of the presentations, they may say to us, we saw four presentations. We want to sample all four of those presentations. I'll notify the publishers. We will send complete samples to every school. That includes teacher student additions, digital access, all the components. And once, once we narrow, the next part of that is, is once we've decided to sample those materials, be it one, be it two, three or four, we post that on the district website for 20 days for public review. That posting is digital access for any member of the community to go on the website, click on the link and see, just it's access to the full student version. The publisher takes care of the security aspects of it, but they're allowed to go in there and poke around, and at the end of 20 days, at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, we will have to offer the opportunity for the public to come in and simply comment on what we are considering for adoption. Now, that comes with an asterisk. Natalie and I talked to Art Hardy this morning because we're trying to clarify some of the language regarding that 20 days and where that falls in and what's considered recommended or possibly for consideration versus what we're actually, what the committee brings to the board and says, this is what we want to adopt. So there's a difference there when we narrow.
More on that in future slides.
So as we, yeah, as we move through the process and get some more clarification on that, it's very.
This is new, though, right? Because I don't remember a public ever coming back to the board.
No, we've always, what we've always done, the addition, my understanding, the addition of the open public comment is new.
Okay, yeah, yes, I've never heard anybody come.
We've always had the opportunity, prior to my taking this, you know, when Sue Meckler was in this position and I believe Sharon, prior to her, they, we put samples up in the curriculum office and somebody sat there for several hours if any member of the public wanted to come in to review. The last two adoptions that I've been party to, we've posted those samples online. We have not held the open public comment part.
Bridget?
And this is, may not, maybe more so looking forward versus what's happened in the past because I know, so you're saying we would post them on the website, but you know, how would any member of the
those committees and vet those numbers of materials that they receive. Very rarely, from, again, from my perspective, have I seen a short bid list or a final adopted list where I question and say, where did this come from, or why did they do this? Now, I'm not the content expert, I rely on content, I'm a language arts guy, I'm a former middle school language arts teacher, so, you know, if we get into math and biology, I'm not the best person, but our content experts are the ones, and they have been, they're very excited this year, both our middle school and high school content specialists are very excited about the samples that they've seen so far.
So, it's across the all-subject area, is it?
Correct, from my experience.
Okay, thank you.
So, moving into October and November, what we do, once we've narrowed, basically, essentially, for lack of a better term, our list, eye contact the publishers, and we have them come down and present. It really is, to coin a phrase, a dog and pony show. You know, it's an hour, it's a sales pitch, it's, here's the best parts, here's the best pieces of what we have to show you. And at that point, at the end of that meeting, there have been times where the teachers, the committee will come back together, we reconvene after they do their presentations, they leave the room, they're gone, they pack up, and our committee has said, we love everything we saw, or there's one that clearly stands out to them, that they say, we don't, no one is interested in having that product move forward, and I notify the publishers after that and say, you've been selected to move forward, or unfortunately, you haven't, and our content experts then provide me with an explanation. We always, we like to provide the publishers with an explanation as to why they weren't selected to move forward. You know, it's happened in the past, there have been times that we've come back believing that it would be just one product that we were going to elect to move forward, or sample, maybe two at the schools, and the teachers came in very excited about something that we said, okay, sure, and we sample those out to schools as well, which is the next part. So, once they come back to us at the end of the presentations, they may say to us, we saw four presentations, we want to sample all four of those presentations, I'll notify the publishers, we will send complete samples to every school. That includes teachers, student additions, digital access, all the components. And once we narrow the next part of that, is once we've decided to sample those materials, be it one, be it two, three, or four, we post that on the district website for 20 days for public review. That posting is digital access for any member of the community to go on the website, click on the link, and see, just, it's access to the full student version, the publisher takes care of the security aspects of it, but they're allowed to go in there and poke around, and at the end of 20 days, at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, we will have to offer the opportunity for the public to come in and simply comment on what we are considering for adoption. Now, that comes with an asterisk. Natalie and I talked to Art Hardy this morning, because we're trying to clarify some of the language regarding that 20 days, and where that falls in, and what's considered recommended, or possibly for consideration, versus what we're actually, what the committee brings to the board and says, this is what we want to adopt. So, there's a difference there when we narrow.
We'll be more on that in future slides.
So, as we, yeah, as we move through the process and get some more clarification on that, it's very...
This is new, though, right? Because I don't remember public ever coming back to the board.
No, we've always, what we've always done, the addition, my understanding, the addition of the open public comment is new.
Okay, yeah, yes, I've never heard anybody come before.
We've always had the opportunity, prior to my taking this, you know, when Sue Meckler was in this position, and I believe Sharon, prior to her, they, we put samples up in the curriculum office, and somebody sat there for several hours, if any member of the public wanted to come in to review. The last two adoptions that I've been party to, we've posted those samples online. We have not held the open public comment part.
Bridgette.
And this is, may not, maybe more so looking forward versus what's happened in the past, because I know, so you're saying we would post them on the website, but, you know, how would any member of the public know that that's on the website at that given time, outside of just going on the website?
Yes, and we did, we did talk about that, so, in, whether it's a splash on the main page, a blurb from our communications office, or something that says Sarasota County is adopting 612 Science, we've narrowed our choices down to these three, and they are available on the instructional materials.
Website.
Portion of the website, and click on the link.
And, but historically, we didn't do any kind of outreach, so, it would be there, but it wasn't, and that's just, it's just a fix going forward, like I said.
Correct. We didn't really communicate it, and so, we're going to have a broader way of communicating the fact that it's available. And as Rob said, if someone wants to come in to his office, we will also have physical copies there, if someone wants to peruse through the physical copies, as well as what's on the website.
Okay, very, perfect, thank you.
Well, I'm sure if somebody requested to be notified, I mean, we could put them on a list to send emails out, okay, you're on a list of people who want to be notified.
Well, with our new app, I believe we have broader reach, and we can shoot out a message. I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of their notification system, but, I mean, that's quite possible, I'm sure.
Just a point of clarification, does the state adoption process allow for public comment and appeal, or is that done only at the local level?
The state process allows for direct participation from parents and community members, and I would have to clarify whether or not they allow for comment and appeal, and/or challenges to the state list. I would like to say I don't believe they do, similar to what they're now requiring us to do, but I can clarify that.
Thank you.
Good question.
So, moving forward into December, hopefully, we have, and this was brought to my attention last year, when I mentioned this EdValuate tool, I, some of you may have heard of it, it's part, it's a subset of a company called EdCredible, and I believe Jane brought that to Sue's attention last year, and I looked into it, and I consider myself a pretty tough judge of instructional materials, I try to be, so, I get contacted quite a bit, as I'm sure sometimes you do. Every vendor has something new and something different. Very rarely do I see something that I go, wow, this could really impact what we do. Essentially, this tool is a shell, and I don't really want anybody to misunderstand or misrepresent that, so, when we talk about purchasing this, or, we're not purchasing really a product that does something unto itself. What it does is it allows us to take our rubric, place it within this shell, and collect data. So, in the past, when we've issued these rubrics on paper, it required our teachers to manually fill everything out, be as thorough as possible, it required us to collect those rubrics, somebody to sit down and try to make sense of it all.
Shirley, excuse me.
But doesn't EdCredible also have a way that we can look at how other districts that may have adopted this book, or textbook, or whatever, is, how they're using it, and what their teachers' comments are? I believe it allows.
Yes, yes.
Teachers to comment, so teachers can talk to teachers, or to other teachers, if we adopt this book, textbook, curriculum materials, whatever, we can then talk to other teachers who are using it?
Correct, and I've referred this to a few people as the Yelp of textbooks. You can get on and review that textbook as a teacher, as a parent, as a community member, and say, hey, my child is using Reading Wonders, I think it's great, or, I don't like this piece, or I like that piece, and give it a star rating, and anybody can go on to the EdValuate portion of it, or the EdCredible portion of it, and see reviews for instructional materials for any number of districts, be it in Florida or across the nation. And honestly, just like Yelp, you can put as much credit into that as you want. You know, you get some bias, so you have to look at it that way, but the EdValuate portion of the tool allows us to break down and disaggregate all that data. So, what, my intent now, moving forward, we've never, we haven't done this before, so, the best-laid plans, my hope is that we would get an incredible amount of participation, have people go in and look at this, our committee members, and evaluate, we could open it up to administrators, board members, the community, I'm just, the potential is there for them to weigh in, and then we can disaggregate that data and pull it out to say, well, what did parents think? What did community members think? What did the board think? What did our school-based administrators think? And use that, not to make the final decision, but to simply say...
And let me say one thing, too, I'm sorry.
Sure.
We have to be mindful of the time also.
I do, sorry.
From my evaluation perspective, what I like about this is that the committee is going to make their decisions based on their own review, the publisher's presentation, information that we've gathered through the EdValuate that we can summarize for them, they're sitting down going, wow, 60% of the people that reviewed it loved this, or had these issues, so, it just brings more information to that textbook adoption committee that they can make informed decisions, where before, they didn't have it. So, that's, I think, a very value-added piece. Okay, I'm going to be your timekeeper.
That's good, no, that's the one part I'm sorely lacking. It's never a lack of words, it's just a lack of time. So, you know, we do give consideration to the following factors, if you look back in all of our adoptions, you know, does the product align to the standards? Does it meet the needs of all learners? Is there a continuity of instruction? That's the benefit of a district-wide adoption and implementing textbook series across multiple levels, is you have the ability to do all of this. So, uniformity of core instruction to address mobility issues, and certainly, a consistency of instruction in professional development. So, so, moving forward in the process, in January and February, the district adoption committees for recommendation for adoption materials are posted, sent to the school board for approval. So, we will make a final selection, send it to you for approval. Upon approval by the board, should you approve, it's posted on the district website for 30 calendar days, and I believe this is, this is what's new. Here comes the new part.
No, no, mine is the new part. So, I'm the new board member, so, I've been to one January meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, is, I assume you're doing science, math, reading, you know, English, language arts, whatever. So, can I expect every January, there's going to be a different subject, or is it like every other? Because I can imagine there's got to be 12, 15 different subjects, I mean, I can't...
I can, yeah, I mean, I'll send you the timeline.
Because I don't remember you this January voting on this.
No, we didn't, we didn't have a, we didn't have a major core district-wide adoption.
I was going to say, oh my God, I didn't read my packet.
Yeah, so, we have an adoption cycle, I have the timeline, it's posted on the instructional material.
How often can I expect to see?
From now on, it would probably be at least one subject per year.
Oh, except for the, my first year on the board?
Except for your first year.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes, yes. So, we'll, yes.
Jane, and the adoptions are made for, what, about a six-year period, is five or six years?
It's a five-year, there was some flexibility with a six-year, based on when we adopt, there's a choice to keep it for six years, and why I say that, and why the state says that, is, originally, it was a very firm five-year period.
Right.
When they added the ability for a district to adopt in the second year, they coined it as being a six-year adoption. Conceivably, now, you can add a third year to that. We've had to extend some adoptions based on where we are with the budget, and we've arranged for that by purchasing digital extensions, and making use of our current print, and purchasing supplementary materials to supplement our inventory, not different materials. So, the new part here is that, once it's been selected and adopted by the board, it's posted on the district website for 30 calendar days. Derek, yes?
So, at the, when we adopt, are we adopting one textbook per subject? Is it possible that we have, we adopt two biology textbooks, or we would only adopt one biology textbook?
For a district-wide implementation, we would adopt one biology textbook.
So, first grade reading, we would adopt one first grade reading?
Correct.
Okay. For district-wide adoption?
Correct.
For a core set of materials. And keep in mind, I think I know where you're going, Eric, because you're always very candid and open about your concerns. Schools always have the ability to purchase ancillary materials, purchase additional materials to complement what we have for the core, so that's always been a process. Schools have allocations for instructional materials, but even if they exceed that, it comes back to the central office, and we review the request and see if it's aligned to their needs. We're always customizing things for individual schools' unique needs.
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear.
Just like, just the core, the basics.
I can't wait till he gets into the process where he says, this is where the principals opt out of that one, and they choose a different one. I'm waiting for that part of the process, for him to say that, so, that's why I hadn't brought that up.
Okay.
I'm waiting for that moment when he says that.
Well, it's not in the slides, but, I know. Oh, you're a quick reader. All right.
So, during that time, any citizen of Sarasota County has the opportunity to review that adopted material and submit a formal objection to the school board. This is, this is the new part, at which point, January, February continues, and at the conclusion of that 30-day time period, should any formal objection be submitted, we will have to conduct an open public hearing, at which point, we will provide a hearing officer to preside over the meeting and hear formal objections. The hearing officer will then make a recommendation to the board regarding the merit of the filed objection. There are several parameters set forward by the state for those objections to meet.
Who is, who would be considered a hearing officer?
Let me answer that. So, Jane.
Microphone.
So, it's on. Uh, no?
It's on here.
It's loaded.
There it is.
There it is.
Just FYI, we do have a call-in to a retired judge. We thought, wow, if anybody can be, you know, not have, make judgment before hearing all sides and be unbiased, it's a retired local judge who's highly respected, but I have not heard word back, so, that's who we've suggested. We have a call-in.
That's great, that's great. Bridgette.
And for clarification, the hearing officer is the individual districts to determine what parameters and qualifications we, as a board, collectively determine what that parameters look like.
But the state statute does have certain, like, they can't be an employer of the district.
Yeah, no, there's a, there are lists, but then, the individual districts have their own flexibility.
Yes, and I believe the state has only provided two stipulations, it's very open, so...
But wouldn't this be a good time for the principals to be able to say, this isn't a textbook that I want to use at my school, I want to use a different textbook, because it seems like that this would be the opportune time for a principal to, I wouldn't use the word "object," but decide, hey, we like textbook B, not textbook A?
Operating as a member of the public, the principal is more than entitled to submit an objection to an instructional material and come and make their case?
No, no.
Oh.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying, I'm saying that they would be able to exercise their right under current policy, and the principals have a right under current policy of choosing the, of being responsible and choosing instructional material for their, for their school. That's in policy right now, that's board policy.
I think one of the reasons that we got away from that was because our students travel, so, sometimes they're in North County, sometimes they're in South County, and if we don't keep the same material, they lose all of the learning that they've had from North County when they move to South County.
I don't understand what you mean, we got away from following policy? Because the policy says...
Oh, we didn't get away from following policy.
Well, the policy says the principal is the person who is responsible, not the district, not the committee, not Rob, no offense, it says, the policy says, principal. It's not a policy Eric Robinson voted on, I'm guessing, since you've been here for 19 years, you actually voted on it. It's a policy that says the principal is the one, and hopefully, if we have gotten away from policy, that we go back to following the policy of the board.
Well, and that reference is also found in Florida statute, and so, we are not to the point in the process in which we are making purchases on behalf of school sites, and so, where the process will vary for this adoption is, before placing an order, we will have to formalize a process to go to building-level administrators and say, before we make a purchase on behalf of your 125 third graders, are you opting in or out of this adoption?
But will they have time to evaluate that, Tom?
Absolutely, I mean, they have notice of the adoption from the time that we initiated this process. Their teachers will be represented on the committee, and certainly, I think it would be a rare principal that would go against the recommendation of their teachers. I think what you will see is, if you have an enclave of teachers at a school site, that the principal would act on their behalf.
Do not, when they had that EdValuate tool, at that point, teachers and principals and other administrators have a chance to weigh in at that time, so then, those people who are making, the committee will see the principal's input at that time. Right now, we haven't had that, but now, back in the early part of the process, before we even adopt the book, or textbook, or material, the principals have a time to weigh in, under that EdValuate tool, that's listed in the November section.
Bridgette.
Well, and I think the area of clarification is, is certainly that members, a variety of what, you know, administrators and instructional leaders can weigh in on the EdValuate, but, and if we consist, unless we change our current policy, which does allow for principals to have that individual opt out, so, let's say hypothetically, Sarasota County School Board adopts X, the principals still have the opportunity to exempt themselves out, and that was what we discussed previously, but then, they have to just be aware of the, there are cost implications or such, but as it stands right now, that would take place after the adoption was formally adopted, is that correct?
Correct, they have to have a material presented to them, that we would make a selection, and say, this is our biology textbook, then we may receive objection from individual principals on behalf of their, their school sites.
Jane?
If I'm not wrong, this is really the exception rather than the rule, is it not? I think a lot of principals have a tendency to all gather behind the core book or instruction material that's used, and then supplement with other things that they or their teachers think would be helpful to that particular school.
In my experience, in this role, I've yet to have a principal, because they have the flexibility to support core materials, almost exclusively in any way they choose, you know, by purchasing support materials, online programs, I've yet to have a principal approach me, or anyone approach me, to say, school A isn't satisfied with our adoption, they really want to stop using it.
But I also think it's fair to say that our process did not include a check with me, they could voice an objection, but never did we go to the principal and say, before we place this order. And so, yes, no principal has ever raised their head and hand and said, hold on a second, but also, our process did not include that check-with-me part.
Correct.
And the other thing, the benefit of my being around so long, is that I know how we did it before, and I know how we're doing it now, and now is more inclusive than it was before, and it really hurt children, and because we have such a mobile society, it really hurt children moving from north to south, and they move a lot.
But I want to make sure we're clear, the policy currently, as it stands right now, says...
I hear you, I hear you.
No, the policy as it stands right now, because you said we got away from, so, the policy as it stands right now is, I want to make sure principals know that it's not the, the procedure is now going to match the policy, and my question is, is I just want to make sure that they have plenty of time to get the training for the teachers, to make a decision of which textbook that they want, that they're not behind the eight ball, that it's not June or July, or, you know, when they're having to make this decision, or, hey, you know, I want to make sure that the principals, and more importantly, the teachers at the school, so it'd have to be a time when the school was in session, that the teachers in the school are allowed to create that enclave, get behind a certain thing, and let the principal, the principal knows. I just want to make sure that there is time for that, for that to develop.
Well, I think it's important to remind you that after the initial vetting, every teacher of that subject area was provided the material, so, their school is, it's not a committee at that point, all of their teachers teaching biology have those materials at that point in time. And so, it's no longer representative, it is every teacher on that campus, and so, they may receive three or four different books, so, they will be familiar with all four. When a selection is made at the end, they may say, wait a minute, the district went with A, and we're in love with B, but they will be familiar with all of the options, every teacher on their campus, and then will communicate their objections up through their, their principals, but every teacher of the subject area, after we have done that initial screening, is involved in the process.
Okay, I just thought it was just the ones on the committee.
Correct.
Oh, thank you.
No, when we sample the schools, yeah, when we sample the schools, you know, the ultimate goal is that all of the teachers, as Dr. Bowden stated, that all of the teachers teaching that specific area participate in their own review at the school site. teaching that specific area participate in their own review at the school site. The committee member is just the chair of the school committee and is tasked with going back to the school to fairly represent the process at the school level.
Thank you.
I know we got to be tight on time. Very quickly, though, for, just for clarification, at each location, whichever subject matter we're vetting and likely to adopt, each school has a chair, if you will, that represents the feedback at each school site to bring back to the committee?
Correct. Each school is represented on the committee. So then they come back and voice, our school, again, like Dr. Bowden said, we really loved A, you know, so.
Sounds to me like it's a very thorough process.
We hope it is.
What I'm hearing is a very thorough process. Thank you.
Yes. So where are we on time?
January, February.
The hearing officer.
Okay.
Go next.
So real quick, before we leave the hearing officer, we will make recommendations to the board, but that is not an appointment that I will make. That is a recommendation that I would make to the board if we get to that point, based on a criteria that you provide to me. But like I said, we've kind of done some legwork behind the scenes to, so that we have a recommendation to make, and some folks that might be willing to fill those roles if needed. But that decision would ultimately be yours, the appointment of the hearing officer within that state criteria.
I would like to state something here. The board has never sat on, board members have never sat on an advisory committee, because we hold too much influence and we have a tendency to influence the committee based on our thinking. So I would hope that this board would continue that process, allow you to filter it, do your whatever, and bring it to the board unbiased. And so, the board can decide yea or nay. And I would hope that we continue that. Eric, we've discussed this before.
No, I don't, I don't believe any board members on this textbook selection committee, are there?
No.
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 So I don't, I'm looking at curiously, I don't understand what...
I just want to make sure that we understand that, because we're a relatively new board with relatively new people who want to get much more involved and hands-on with what it is that staff is doing. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that that is not something that the board has done.
Isn't the textbook selection committee, I assumed it was selected by staff. Do we select those on the textbook selection committee?
No, no, no.
So how could a board member...
I'm making an overall statement. I'm not, I'm not, this is not towards anyone or anything. I made an overall statement. Yes, Bridgette?
As it relates to the hearing officer, since this is a new portion, you know, regulated by state, and I know that we're evaluating our current policies to match with our procedures, would it, I would think it would make sense to include into our current policy that, you know, that, or the process, to include that and include, and maybe a discussion of the board and, you know, our educational instructional leaders of what those parameters would make up, so that we can have that included in there already, not wait for, you know, for...
Here's my note, Bridgette. Change policy.
Okay. Well, so I just want to make sure that's a process we follow up on, not just wait for it to happen and then scramble.
No, we're going to try to be ahead of that one. And as I said earlier, we will thank you, Rob. We will begin, come back to you with a draft policy with the matching or corresponding procedural document that spells it out into further detail, with all of that in there for you to give us feedback on.
Thank you. 10 minutes?
10 minutes? Okay.
Good.
We're good. I think we're good. So the hearing officer will make a recommendation to you, the board, and your decision is considered final. So you will then decide, did the objection, should the objection be upheld? And at that point, we'll go through that. So if you agree with the hearing officer, disagree with the hearing officer, your decision is final. If you decide to move forward with the adoption of the selected material, then the purchase process will begin. If you decide to uphold an objection, at that point, then we will have to start all over again, throwing out what was adopted as, for consideration, and begin the process again, which would warrant a whole new set of conversation as far as how that would get completed, because, all right. So March and April, if adopted, the following process is implemented. At that point, we start to define components. As you may or may not know, any textbook series comes with literally sometimes hundreds of decisions, workbooks, ancillary materials, support materials. It's usually a group of teachers and curriculum that decide if we're given the choice between four workbooks, which two best meet the needs of our students, and we get those for the life of the adoption, or which ones would we say leave that we consider part of the adoption, but give the school an opportunity to maybe select their own ancillary materials. We haven't done that in the past, but that's, could be something that we consider, where we adopt the text, certain textbook, and then a school is given the decision as to which ancillary they would like to use to support that material.
I'm laughing because Todd and Laura saw me push that button and know exactly what I'm going to say. Please keep in mind the time element of teachers.
I know what you're going to say.
There was a workbook, and all of the pages had to be torn out. And of course, at the beginning of the school year, without volunteers and everything, that sometimes falls on the teacher's parents or spouses. And I just kept tearing those pages out and saying, my time isn't worth this. I mean, this is, so keep that in mind of the time that is needed for the teachers to be able to use that. If you've got a workbook where they have to...
We did for that specific example. It was cost prohibitive. They wanted, and ridiculous.
I know, I know. You looked at that.
We did look at that.
But at least send a note to the teachers to let them know why they have to rip out these. But if you get a book that then isn't used, you've wasted the money you've spent.
Agreed. I agree.
But from a process standpoint, again, I think, as I hear, and I certainly, this is my personal opinion, is the more input we have, you know, the stronger support at each instructional study or school site you'll have behind it. So include, making sure that's included throughout the process, so that you don't get to a point where someone wants something else, but they had that option. But what I am understanding here, especially as you articulated earlier, Dr. Bowden, on the cost aspect of it, if a school site was to opt out, if we're talking about some of the supplemental documents here on page 11, is there flexibility for individual schools or principals or teachers to determine which ones they want?
Well, and that's what I referenced previously. In the past, we haven't done that. It's been a group decision. So we choose textbook A.
Okay.
And within textbook A, we're given the option of selecting workbook one through four. And the committee curriculum gets together and decides, okay, so we're provided with two of these choices for the life of the adoption. We'll get them every year. They're consumable, they're workbooks. We've selected those along with the adoption. There have been times over the course of my time in this job that a school has contacted me to say, hey, we're looking for workbook C. And I would say, it wasn't included in the adoption. A school can then use their instructional materials dollars, their local school-based instructional materials dollars, to purchase those workbooks if that's something they wish to do. We haven't, to this point, explored what it would look like or what it would take to implement a school-based choice for ancillary materials. So I'm not saying, that is definitely something we can consider. I just can't conceptualize from a business, from my standpoint, how that would work. But we would make it work if that's...
Yeah, and I think that's something we need to spend time on. I know from time to time, we get phone calls about workbooks that were never touched, because we make a decision to buy workbook A, and it may be used extensively at 20 elementary schools, but at three of them, you find them in the dumpster untouched, because it just wasn't part of their instructional plan. So, you know, if they would rather have C than A, we've got to figure that out. But I also recognize the nightmare that that represents for you. But we'll figure it out with you.
Yeah, we can, we'll make that work.
And can I just make one more comment about that? The publishers often wrap those, the cost into which workbook you choose. So it's a bundled package, which is, makes it challenging, too.
Eric?
But I think it's great to allow the schools to determine what ancillary materials that they want. I mean, we've had schools where the last day of school, all the teachers got together at the media center saying that they wanted a different program. And so, I want to make sure the school district is supportive of those teachers. I know it's a headache for you at the landings, but at the end of the day, it's got to be right for the teachers.
No, and I, I agree. I mean, I really do agree. We can, we can make those things work. I'm speaking from my standpoint only, because I can't speak for anybody else. But, I mean, we can make those things work. There are components and pieces of that, because I agree. From my standpoint, I look at, sometimes there are boxes of workbooks that are overused at one school, and we move them from a school that's underused. And yes, if school A would rather have one than two, then if we can make that happen, then I'm not as concerned with how we're going to get them there. We can, we can make that happen. So March and April, we pretty much just discussed the process and the types and quantities, print, digital. Pretty much everything now is print and digital. We have made a drastic turn where most times, all of our adoptions are one-to-one, meaning one student, one textbook. That goes along with digital as well. That's the way they're bundled, so every kid has digital access. Is that 100% across the board? No, we have some longstanding adoptions. That's not how they were purchased. So we don't, but we make it work. So, let's see. At that same time during March and April, we arrange for professional development that's built into the negotiating of the textbook purchase. Do keep in mind that textbook publishers, vendors also have what they call favored nations, which means that pricing is somewhat set. And there's not, unfortunately, we don't undergo some of the rigorous procedures and processes that you would in the private sector and business. What price they give Broward is the price they give us and vice versa. So if we negotiate a certain price, they have to match that price in component packages. That's not to say that we can't negotiate. We have negotiated and created Sarasota-only packages. But the more we can do upfront, as you mentioned, Eric, the better off we are when it comes to that process. It's less of a negotiation and more of a bargaining.
Will we be able to have longer than 20 days' access as a board member to those books?
I can, I can arrange that. And honestly, the samples, Eric, are in my warehouse. You can stop by.
Are there certain samples for certain books that I need for longer than 20 days? Thank you.
Yes.
April and July, which brings us to the end. And this is all the instructional materials stuff. Orders are received in the warehouse. We try as best as possible, and it has succeeded every time, to get teachers their teacher additions, be they print or digital, in their hands prior to school, getting out to make sure that they have time to prepare and access to the materials. And then we begin implementation at the warehouse level. So we take everything in the warehouse, break it all out of the boxes, barcode it all, put it all in the system, create all the shipments and deliver them to 42 schools. So, very simple. Yep, easy. I've got that. It's like Amazon, it just happens. So, and essentially, that's the process. That's where we stand. So I'm in July, so that's, and as stated in your PowerPoint, you will see the slides that mention state statute 1006283, which is the entire process as defined by the state.
Thank you. Any further questions?
So, as I asked at the beginning, and so did Laura, if you as a board feel comfortable giving us some sense of direction with that first question, which is, should we continue to piggyback or follow from where the state leaves off with our textbook adoption committee? Or do our own opt-out of the state's process and complete all of those steps as a county?
I prefer that we follow the state's adoption process to begin with, what we've been using now. I just see that it would be so time-consuming to look at other ones and to not know. I mean, I think the state does a lot of the legwork for us in the beginning. And again, you talk about students being mobile. You know, I think it's better for the students if we have sort of consistency from one county to the next. We're looking at the same groups of books, that we're not going out there somewhere out of left field to bring in textbooks. But I would think that the cost involved of adding staff would be prohibitive.
Bridgette?
Well, I mean, I, well, I think it's interesting that only one of 67 counties has adopted that process, Marion County being the first, and they're still in their, this is their first year, similar to how you have done the experience of adopting after a second year implementation, to see how that works. I think if we were ever to consider that, it would be after kind of having a test run from another county to see how they were able to achieve that. I mean, ultimately, the biggest thing for me is input and then having some flexibility within reason. But I, input throughout the entire process is critical to me. So as, as we drill down, specifically on the committee makeups, of course, and that process, and how we communicate that with the community and parents, those are going to be the most important parts for me. So I'm fine with us continuing on the state process. I would like to know about the public comment and whether there is an opportunity for an appeal at the state level. I'm just curious. But as it stands now, I think that as long as we can strengthen the local piece of the communication and flexibility, I'm happy to continue on with option A.
We did have, at one time, we had somebody come in and object to a book, and we put together a committee and had them review the textbook. And so it was outside of our realm. They came in and they did that, and they found that the textbook was adequate.
Jane?
Well, I agree. I think it's a good idea to stay with the state, because it would be extremely costly to add that many employees to, to get the job done that the state is providing us, and it seems to be an adequate providing. I think that as we go through these new statutes and see how it works, Marion County, and I don't know why they have adopted that, but they have some ideas that they have been out on the forefront of things before. I think we can look to Marion County, see if other school districts, maybe Collier or some other school districts, adopt as well. But I think if it's not broke, don't fix it. And I think we've had good association with the state doing that preliminary work. And if we could make it more robust, so that our community does have more input or perception of understanding why we choose what we choose, although some of these folks may not have the ability to make that decision academically for us, but it's still, it would help. And I remember when, 2010, when we had an issue with the World History Book.
Right.
It weighs six and a half pounds. That's what I always remembered, is it weighs way, way, way too much. And I would like to see more digital opportunities for our students because of that weight factor and the fact that they're carrying these big, heavy backpacks, although that helped us with our bicyclist at Pineview, who was in the accident the first week of schools. That heavy backpack really was a protection to him. But I think that's one of the very few times that that is helpful. But I would like to, I'd like to say, you know, let's get, let's be more robust on the end of being able to have our community feel that they're a part of this and a partner of this. And then, of course, we also have the issue, which we didn't discuss today, of library books. And although we don't have libraries, we have media centers, and that's a big issue to me as well, you know, that's also going to rear its head in terms of making choices for libraries as well, so I think, or media centers as well. So I think, I think we're at a good place to make it more robust on the end of actual selection.
Eric?
Thank you very much for bringing this subject forward. This is the kind of stuff that I thoroughly enjoy the board discussing. Obviously, I asked you the question about how you felt about the state adoption, because to me, at the end of the day, it's what you guys, you know, think, how efficient you think it is. And so, I give great weight to what staff thinks. And so, the fact that you believe that it's being handled appropriately. But the caveat is, if there comes a time where staff thinks, you know what, I think that, you know, in math, I think that they're a little off the rails in compared to what we want to. Even though right now, we're all saying, we don't want to opt out, I think the board would love to hear if you come back and say, listen, we think that for this particular subject, it's not working. I think the board as a whole would be open to listen to what, you know, staff had to say. And obviously, we'd probably, you know, probably implement whatever recommendation you had. So just because we're saying something now, please don't take that to mean that we're closing the door from any future input that you may have. And I really, really, really do think that, I can't say really enough, how important it is to have flexibility so the local schools can make sure that they're teaching in a manner that works well for their students, because it's a big county and we have a diverse population, and it's not necessarily one-size-fits-all. And you've got to trust the principals, and more importantly, the teachers, to understand what works best in their unique situations. So thank you very much for taking that into consideration.
And I'm also in favor of using the state.
And I'm also in favor of using the state adoption policy. Yes, Bridgette?
For clarification, again, I just want to make sure, and even for anyone who's listening, this is one of many, many steps from a discussion standpoint because we've realized how kind of away from procedurally, we were from our current policy. And so twofold here. I had mentioned the committee process from all aspects. I am hoping we're going to drill into that as a board and that makeup and the weight and who's decision-makers and all of that. So I want to make sure anyone listening knows that that's not, it's not necessarily staying as-is. And the second part is, is obviously, thank you for this work, and there is a tremendous amount of work to it. And so more so than anything else is whatever policy and procedures we have, they should match moving forward. We don't want all of this work to be for nothing. So that's, I'll leave it at that.
And that's exactly what I was going to end with was, so next up is working with Art on interpreting the legislation and creating policy, not, not the old policy, but the new policy based on current legislation, and also getting our procedures down. So we have a procedural guide. So the, the actual amount of work that's coming up is a lot more than what we just did.
Shirley, last, last comment.
And, and I just want to make sure that we let all of the teachers know about the ed-evaluate, and the public, so that that's the best place for them to make their comments or objections or whatever, so that they get those out there so that perhaps there's an answer to what their concern was. But I think that ed-evaluate will really give us a lot of feedback from our staff and the community.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Very good, very knowledgeable. Thank you. It's a referendum. Referendum.
So Laura's going to stick with us, and our next item on the agenda is creating a culture for learning.
Yep. And so when we think about the culture for learning, you think about getting kids in schools and having some stability, right? So we were asked the question, what happens when children are mobile? And Denise did her due diligence on giving us a very thorough report. Again, we apologize for you not getting this last week. Had we known we were going to be out of school, Denise had this ready the week prior, we could have sent it. So here we go. Denise, lots of great details.
Hello, everybody. I want to first thank George and Kevin from my office because they did a very thorough analysis 14 years back, trying to track children and where they moved. So if you think of herding cats, do that 14 times with 40,000 students. So there was a longer report that we put together, but for the brevity, I made it pretty succinct. And so we'll go through it. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. There was three basic research questions that were posed. One, what is the extent of student mobility? We know in the research that mobility is not positively correlated with outcome. We wanted to see what was the extent of our mobility here, and did that have a negative impact? So the three questions are, what was the extent of our mobility? Do students who enter a Sarasota County school in kindergarten and remain in a Sarasota school perform better academically than those students who enter Sarasota County at a later date? And then do students enrolled in Sarasota County who move within or out of the school district demonstrate academic differences from students who do not demonstrate mobility? So those are our three big questions, and I made the, we'll go one by one. But first, I have to, some operational definitions. Whenever you propose research like this, you have to really clarify what you're looking at because we have every imaginable movement. So a movement is when a student moves either to a different school within the same grade span, so like elementary, middle, and high school. A non-movement is if they don't move. They go from their elementary all the way through, all the way through their middle that they've chosen, and then all the way through their high school. Okay? Any other version is a movement. Yes?
Clarify?
Yes.
So we have a significant number of people who go through district-managed elementary schools, go to charter schools, and they come back to district-managed schools. Would you consider that a movement?
I would not, but they're not considered in this analysis.
Okay.
Charter schools were not included in the analysis because as we started to do this, we soon realized that charter schools were added grades throughout the 14 years. It would have been too difficult to track them. And by the time, you know, so one year, they may have elementary only, then the next year, they had elementary and middle. So it became too cumbersome. We just couldn't keep it straight. So no matter how hard we tried, and we did try, so we excluded them.
It would have taken an.
An inordinate amount of time and not yielded us.
Quick information.
And again, for clarification, so because we are open, this doesn't have to do with their zoned district school. It's just the continuity of you're at school A for K through, you know, what, five? And then, okay, just want to make.
So I said why charter schools weren't included, and then we began with the graduating cohort of 2016. That was the group that we were looking at and backtracking with because they were the only group that had both the third grade and 10th grade tests at the time when we did the study. So first question, what's the extent of student mobility in Sarasota County schools? 70% of students who enter a Sarasota County school before the grade three assessment remain at their school. 52% remain stable by the age of grade 10, and 50% remain stable through graduation, meaning that there's quite a bit of movement in those later grades. 13% of the students demonstrated multiple moves, either to other district schools or in and out of the district schools before graduation. Question two was, do students who enter a school in kindergarten and remain in Sarasota County perform better academically than students who enter school at a later date? Students who began kindergarten in day one in Sarasota County scored nine points higher on the grade three FCAT, and that was the test they were taking, obviously, at the time, than students who entered at a later date. Students who began kindergarten on day one and then remained at that school through grade three scored an average 70 points higher, 75 points higher on the FCAT compared to students who began at a later date and then moved multiple times in and out of the district. I think that was a real clear outcome of this.
Bridgette? I'm sorry. I just, again, on page two, on the second bullet, you said 13% of students demonstrate multiple moves either to other school districts or in and out of district schools by graduation. Would that fall under anyone who went to a district-managed school, for example, K-5, went to a charter school?
No charters were in the analysis.
So, so we wouldn't consider them moving out of the district?
They weren't even included in the analysis, period. We're only talking about traditional schools.
Right, but you still have.
We didn't account for them.
Who did not go, go to charter schools, those students.
Okay.
So it's really like 40% of all the students.
We didn't look at charter school students at all in the number.
If they were ever a charter school student.
Ever. They were out of the analysis.
That's the part I missed.
And then just to have context, is it 75 points out of 1,100?
75% of students.
No, it's 75 points and nine points.
Oh, on the, on the FCAT?
Yes. Is that out of 1,100?
That was the old FCAT. Oh, 500 points. Wasn't it 500 across?
Because 75 points out of a million doesn't seem like that big of a deal.
No, 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 no.
75 points out of 100 seems like, oh my God.
No, I'm trying to think of the range of third grade and the FCAT. It was still significant. It's a couple hundred points.
Okay. Couple hundred, that's pretty, wow.
Yeah, I can give you that.
I mean, that's like 25% increase out of 300.
Yeah.
I will get you that. And I should have put that, you're right.
That's, out of 300, that's a lot, that's a huge swing.
It is big.
Yeah.
A million?
No, it wasn't a million.
That'd be a lot of test questions.
Do students who enter a school in kindergarten and then remain in the Sarasota County school perform better academically? Again, same question, and then we just moved on and looked at grade 10 scores. Students who began K on day one and weren't mobile through grade 10, other than their normal trajectory through middle and high, scored on average 16 points higher on the grade 10 FCAT compared to students who began school later and then moved multiple times. And then I think the most significant one was 98% of students who began K on day one and they're pretty stable or just made a single move, graduated school on time. And then lastly, do students who move within or out of the school district demonstrate academic differences from students who do not demonstrate mobility? Students who move multiple times within and out of the district had 11 to 13-point lower scale scores on the grade 10 FCAT, and students who move multiple times in and out of the district had a highest dropout rate of over 34%. So I know questions would be considered such as, well, this is related to other variables. And that is absolutely true. There are various variables interceding here, such as poverty and people moving. But looking at the data, as we looked at it so closely, there are many, many, many cases of students that are just moving schools within the district, not due, apparently not due to poverty.
So really, what this shows us is if you stay in our school system, you will do well. If you're moving in and out, you won't. And if you come in late, you'll have a harder time catching up because we're a good school system. Erica?
Well, I mean, it shows, what you had said before, it shows a correlation. But from looking at data, do you see a causation?
This analysis didn't do causation. You're absolutely right. That would have taken a regression. These are based on frequency counts.
Right. But this is a really good study. It's very actionable and something we can use on a daily basis. So thank you very much.
Let me just, let me just add to the facetious comment. So when you think about implications of this, you think about things like when a child, when the family moves from one school district zone to another, and maybe they are just within a few blocks of the bus stop from, to their old school, you know, what can we do to encourage our transportation department to try to make room for them on that bus to keep children from being mobile whenever we can?
But Dr. Kingsley, we encourage people to, to exercise school choice in Sarasota County?
That's not what I'm saying. So I'm saying not forcing children to leave a home school when they move a few blocks away and can't get the bus stop to their school. What can we do systematically to encourage and prevent mobility when we have control over it?
Are you concerned about the fact that we encourage mobile school choice in Sarasota?
Absolutely not. Parents have that right. But, you know, this is also to say, when children are not mobile, here are the results.
Well, I would make one statement, and that is that our transportation department is doing a great job of trying to cover those students that move. I don't think that's it at all. I think that we have a situational issue here, and it's the recession. The recession caused a lot of people to move out of the state who would have been staying and in, in their homes and in this community for the last 15 years. But we know that the recession started in '07 and continued through '12. And I think people came in and out of the county. Renting became more difficult, became more difficult to own a home, and there were a lot of people that, that were here for a long time that moved away, never to come back. And then we've had some people now who have come into, to the area because things are a bit more stable. But I think the whole ground zero of the recession has caused some of these to, these things to happen because the lower socioeconomic groups cannot afford rent, they cannot afford to live in Sarasota County, or maybe they can, and then they can't, and then they come back. So it's been, it's been, it's been a problem for a number of years.
Bridgette?
I think, did you mention, and I know you said you looked at this very closely, and thank you, because I know there's a lot of data we have that we can do lots of stuff with, but you had indicated that you didn't believe a substantial amount that poverty necessarily was playing a role in some of these, or it was?
No, I didn't say that I didn't believe. I believe it is a causal factor.
Okay, but it wasn't excluded.
But it wasn't excluded from this. We didn't manage it separately. I would believe strongly that poverty had a case with some of, with many of these individuals. However, knowing and looking at some other data where you're moving to schools very close to each other, I think it's exercise of choice. But I think people need to be aware when there is multiple movements in schools, and parents need to be aware that it doesn't, it's not always the best impact.
Right. Okay. So it's, I mean, I guess my takeaway is the continuity and least disruptive aspect is going to make a big impact.
Makes very common sense kind of thing.
In the event we have within our confines, outside of a family exercising their own choice, if it's up to us because of district or transportation issues or bus stops or whatever.
Awareness.
Or revoking reassignment based on behavior or attendance. Are there things that we can do systematically? You know, when principals understand this data too, I think we'll be very sensitive. And our achievement gap committee understands this data, we'll be very sensitive to be thinking about what can we do to prevent any kind of mobility that we may have been inadvertently causing.
Okay. Great. Thank you. This is a great presentation.
Good. And next up is Steve Cantise with Denise on SAT and ACT data.
How's everybody doing? Jizzy week last weekend. So Denise, I think you're going to kick us off, and we've got about 20 minutes. We're going to share some information on ACT and SAT preparation and data and preparation, and what we're doing at our schools to continue to improve those scores.
Okay, so we looked at the latest ACT and SAT profile reports. Profile reports come out annually based on the graduating cohort, and then they study how those students did on the ACT and the SAT. Just a little bit of background.